Good evening and welcome to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, May the 16th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. Kaze, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
President?
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Would you all join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Moving to item five. Agenda items to be added. Are there any to be added?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add, uh, to the Matters from Work session that the V dot U S twenty-nine Tight Squeeze Potential Improvements be addressed, um, as an item under Matters from Work session.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren. That's the motion. Can I get a second to add?
Second.
All right. Got a second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I believe Mr. Tucker has an item he wants to add as well.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It just raised its head, so we're just...
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, under New Business, I'd like to add one item, discussion on the safety of the Banister Bridge on Route fifty-seven east of Chatham, discuss its safety.
That'll be under New Business.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Do we need a motion and a second on that, Mr. Hunt?
I'll, I'll second that.
Yes, okay. All right. Got this, sir. All right. Any discussion? If not, we should be ready to vote. Ms. Kaze?
Mr. Hunt, since that was two different motions, do we need two different votes?
Yes.
Uh, no, just combine them together.
Okay.
We, we know what's going on. We'll fix in minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna reset and I will, um...
Okay. I thought you had two different votes.
Okay.
I, I'm not being given an option to vote.
I'm not getting anything in it.
Yeah, it's not showing Mr. Warren or Mr. Dalton.
No.
Okay, I'll get your votes.
It's a yes for me if you need a verb.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's a yes for me also.
Thank you.
Hasn't come up, so that's a yes for me as well.
Okay. Got a yes from Mr. Tucker?
Pass seven zero.
Are we good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving to item six. Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make them approved.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Tim. Sorry.
Mr. Cheshire, thank you. Got a motion, got a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Dudley. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
I'll cast a verbal vote in the affirmative.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
All right. Moving to item seven. The Concern on Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the Concern on Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you all, gentlemen. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. You ready, Ms. Kaze?
I vote yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
That passed seven zero.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kaze. Moving to item eight. Presentations. I asked all the board members to come to the front. We have one presentation. Lord, thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Cheshire, would you like to have your family come down and join us? Any? All of Mr. Cheshire's family, would you come down with us, please? Okay. Hey, Amy. How you doing? Sir? How are you doing? Good. Mr. Cheshire, we have a resolution here we'd like to read and present to you tonight. Um, I would like to say it's been a pleasure working with you on this board. We have made a lot of improvements, good improvements, and we're gonna miss you. I know I am, but I respect your decision why you're leaving, and I wish you and your family the very best. Yes, sir. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-five-oh-two. Resolution, Resolution of Appreciation for Timothy W. Cheshire, Virginia. At its business meeting on May the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Board adopted the following resolution. Whereas the Honorable T M W Cheshire, Cheshire was elected to the board as the Dan River District Representative in two thousand twenty-one, and he served office from January one, two thousand twenty-two through June first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Chet, Cheshire has tirelessly given his time and effort to improve Pennsylvania County, Virginia by serving on the following board's subcommittees, Finance, Legislation, Property and Buildings, and the Tele Commu-, uh, Computer, Radio, Telecommunication Committee. And whereas, as an appointed representative of the board, Cheshire also served as the following other entities, Danville Pennsylvania Regional Facility Authority, Danville Region Business Development Center Board, the Rollup River Basic Association, and the Local Emergency Planning Commission. And whereas Cheshire, with his dedication and leadership faithfully and diligently served the board and county citizens, now therefore be it hereby resolved on behalf of the board and all county citizens that were expressed in sincere appreciation to Cheshire for his outstanding service, leadership, and that he has made him significant figure in the county's history, and wish him all the best in his future indoors. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be presented to Cheshire, given under my hand this sixteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman of Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, Stewart J. Terrell, Jr., Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it. Would any other board member like to speak?
Tim, it's been a real honor. I think we go back to the early nineties. Met him through church, as a matter of fact, but anyway, it's been, it's an honor to have you on this board and really sorry to see you go, but, uh, you take care of yourself and we'll be praying for you.
Um, it's, it's really been a privilege to have Tim on the board. He's just a, just a wonderful person. Um, you know, with his family, he's gone through some real struggles here lately and, you know, they still got battles to fight, but I, I'll be honest, what a privilege it has been to get to know you a little bit better and, um, praying for you. Love you guys. If you ever need us from here on out, call us, and, um, I, I just, um, I appreciate you a lot, Tim. Thank you.
It's been my privilege to serve with you too. I, I knew Tim's dad from way back and, uh, Walter was a special guy and, uh, I had the privilege of working with him across the, the river a little bit when I was doing some car business, but, uh, he would be very proud of the man you are now, and, uh, I really appreciate your service. It, uh, you certainly have a servant's heart and to step up and do what you've done with all the adversity you've been faced with the last year and a half, it's amazing, and you couldn't do that without the support of these folks, in particular this beautiful wife of yours that's, uh, not only taking care of you, but been your protector as, uh, she well should, should be, and, uh, we just want to know, we gonna miss you, and, uh, I'm going to continue to stay in touch and continue to pray for you and the family, uh, but I don't want you to think once you're back to your full health and we go play golf, it ain't gonna be no gimmies.
Mr. Cheshire, uh, I just want to express my gratitude for your undying service to Pennsylvania County. Um, I'm gonna miss your levity. I'm gonna miss your friendship. Uh, we're gonna miss you some days in terms of being the voice of reason in the room, and we thank your family for sharing you with us, and we thank you for sharing all of your hours with Pennsylvania County.
Tim, I know we had our issues starting out, but this year especially, I think we've gotten all that stuff behind us, and you really have brought a lot to the table, and if anyone on this board knows what you're going through, it's me, so I appreciate as much time as you spent, because it takes a lot out of you, and I, I fully understand that, so I really do hate to see you go, truthfully, and we're gonna have to break somebody else in, but I hope everything works out well, and we will be praying for you. I've been praying for you for a long time, and I, I wish you all the best and your family.
Well, now it's my turn. Um, if I've done anything good, if I've done anything right, it's because of my Lord and Savior. Uh, I've made some mistakes. Uh, I had to learn. I come in here as a rookie. I'm a sophomore, now I'm leaving. Um, I couldn't have done it without my wife. It's my wife, Amy, my daughter Brianna, my son Dakota, my mother-in-law Ralph and Cheryl Hall. My father-in-law has, uh, given me a lot of good advice. He will deny it. Uh, he will deny that he even knows me. Um, I'm not worthy to be up here. I'm not a, just, anything that I've done, I had to learn. Um, it's, you've got some of the greatest county workers that you can only imagine. They're very patient with me. They're being very kind to me. Um, also, there's two that are not here, Lisa Farthing and Connie Gibson. They worked with me at Green Rock, and now they work for the county, and they, uh, they kept me in stitches. So there, everybody on this board I've learned from. Um, there's not a, there's not a bad lesson I can take that won't make me a better man, but, um, I just, words just are just not enough to say how thankful I am.
Thank you all for coming. Take care. Appreciate it.
You can get a good side, right?
Yeah.
Which side is that?
All right. One, two, three.
He will be there.
Stay strong. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think we ought to vote on letting him leave now.
All right, gentlemen. We're ready to move on. Moving to item nine. Hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board on the hearing of the citizen shall be a resident and landowner in the county or the rest of agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name in the district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall permit to address the board more than once during the hearing of all the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not any individual member thereof. Hearing the, hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said session who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the boards, at the next board's meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. Kaze, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Roy Vanderhyde.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Vanderhyde.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I'm here to speak about the, uh, intersection at twenty-nine and, and Fairview Road, seven oh-three. Um, I run a dairy, Roy Vanderhyde, Chatham Blair's District. I run the dairy out here on, in Tight Squeeze. If that proceeds as the plans, you know, project, it would be a huge problem for my dairy, for my business, as we travel that road multiple times a day with large, large trucks. I understand in the business meeting that you all have, um, agreed to oppose this. I would like to thank, thank the board for helping out the local citizens of this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderhyde. Anyone else, Ms. Kaze?
Yes, sir. Chuck Angier?
All right. Welcome, Mr. Angier.
Good evening.
Evening, Chuck.
Ms. Chairman, members of the board and staff, thank you for, for this opportunity. I'm Chuck Angier from the Callens Gretner District, and four days ago, a post from the county came across Facebook, uh, to the tune that, um, the operational medical director was going to cease serving eight of the county's emergencies agencies, uh, eight of, I guess, twenty-some. Um, I don't know, may, maybe it's just me, but that sounds like a really big deal to me. Why would an, uh, operational medical director, um, choose eight agencies not to serve anymore? And I want to encourage you that this should be brought out in the open, if at all possible, because I think the county residents need to know why their emergency services may be being put at risk, because as I understand it, they cannot run calls without an operational medical director. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Angier. Anyone else, Ms. Kaze?
Yes, sir. Kale Stone?
All right. Mr. Stone? Welcome, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm back again. I was just here a month ago, addressing the board concerning my concerns, uh, the school's safety, and we all, uh, aware, I just recently happened at Gretner Middle School. And what's, what's really bad for me is the fact that, when I was at a meeting about a month ago, and it was quoted that statistics shows that resource officers are deterrent to children bringing guns to school, and I don't know what that facts came from, but it costs between four to six thousand dollars to put a metal detector in the school. The average renewal cost in the state of Virginia is seventy-eight hundred dollars. Now, I understand that we've taken the steps to bring vape detectors in school, which is very important, but I think it's just as equally as important as we address vape detectors, that metal detectors is huge concern, because we could be sitting here tonight under a whole new different issue if what happened at Gretner Middle School would have went left. Now, the Bible tells us that warning comes before destruction, and if we can't see the handwriting that's on the wall, but I get it. I'm fifty-one years old. Thirty-five years ago, I was fifteen. Thirty-five years ago, police officers was much well-respected. Thirty-five years later, in today's world, and I deal with youth groups all the time, and let me tell you, the young people of this world today do not respect a police officer like they did thirty-five years ago. So therefore, we have to make the necessary adjustments to make sure that our schools are safe. It has been told to me that, well, one of the issues is we can't afford it. Well, I think the question is, if we look at our news, we can't afford not to, and I understand, because I understand budgets and everything, and all that makes sense to me, because I, I do a budget at my home every year in business, but every now and then, I have a leaking pipe that bust that I didn't prepare for. It wasn't in my budget to do it, so when that happens, I have to renegotiate, figure out. Gentlemen, we have a leaking pipe. It's just a matter of time that we're gonna be faced with a dilemma like many other people are facing in this country. Georgia is making decisions. Tennessee is making decisions. Let's take this opportunity and be proactive and not wait till something happens, then we come up with a solution, when all the evidence is right in front of us, that now is the time to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Do we have anyone else signed up, Ms. Kaze?
Yes. Brenda Bowman?
All right. Ms. Bowman? Welcome, Ms. Bowman.
Good evening, Chairman Dalton, Vice Chairman Dudley, board members, staff, and citizens. I am Brenda Bowman of the Chatham Blair's District. I'm here tonight to invite you to two exciting events taking place in our county in June. I hope you will mark your calendars and join us as we celebrate some of our county's tourism assets, our businesses, and our citizens. I'm very excited to announce that finally, we will be dedicating our new love sign located at the Old Dominion Agricultural Complex on Saturday, June the third, at ten AM. The sign is not only an asset on the grounds of O D A C for the thousands of visitors who attend the many events there, but will become a destination for visitors seeking love signs for photo ops throughout Virginia, and to learn more about what our county has to offer. A free standing plaque next to the sign promotes our local businesses and venue sponsors. If any of these businesses or venues are in your respective districts, I encourage you to reach out to them and personally thank them for their generous participation in the cost and design of the sign. Amthor International from Callens Gretner District, Southside Concrete Supply, Chatham Blair's District, Tim Hilliard Marketing and Promotions, Westover District, The Home Place Vineyard, Callens Gretner District, Old Dominion Agricultural Complex... Place Venue, Callens-Grattina District, Old Dominion Agricultural Complex, Bannister District, Warren Shelton Law Firm, Chatham Blair's District, Elite Fabrication, Chatham Blair's District, Todd Bro State Farm, Chatham Blair's District, and the Chatham Rotary Club, Chatham First, Pennsylvania County, and KG Graphics of Danville. The second thing is that on Sunday, June the twenty-fifth, at one P.M. at the Chatham Community Center, we will be inducting the class of twenty-twenty-three into the Pennsylvania County Sports Hall of Fame. The inductees and their districts are Chris DeVivey, Christopher Kane DeVivey, Westover District, Elizabeth Paige Echols, Dan River District, Jesse Meadows of the City of Danville, the Edmonds Brothers, Terrell, Tremaine, and Trey. They are formerly of the Dan River District, but I believe their parents now live in the Westover District. Anthony Parrish from Tunsford, Timothy Peters from Tunsford District, and the Pickle family from the Callens-Grattina and Stanton River Districts, there's four of them, Gary Senior, Gary Junior, Burke, they call him, Brooke Pickle, and Harry. And then Aaron Taylor from the Westover District, and Ramsey Yates from the Chatham Blair's District. I hope that you will all be there. I thank you for the letters that you prepared and that Chairman Dalton signed to present to them that night at the banquet. I hope that all of you could be there, but I really want to see your faces on Saturday morning, June third, at the love sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Ms. Kaze, do we have anyone else?
Willie Fitzgerald.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Good evening, Chairman and other members. Willie Fitzgerald from Bannister District. And this is not my first time coming before the board on this issue, but some of you may not have been on the board when I spoke before, but it's more concerning now than ever. I spoke with VDOT on last Friday, they gave me a call, and they know I'm coming tomorrow to present a resolution, not a resolution, a petition. At this point, I have approximately three hundred signatures that have signed this petition to include the superintendent of the school, the sheriff department, fire department, and others. And the concern is the bridge on fifty-seven East. They, the bridge, they told me it was nine and one years old right now, and not even on a six-year plan. If you get on a six-year plan, you're putting in another forty-five years before anything happens. That would put that bridge at over a hundred years old. They saw the need to reduce it from a two-lane bridge to a one-lane bridge, and it would be that way until it collapses or whatever happens. So tonight, I'm asking this board for a lot of support or emergency resolution that I can caress me tomorrow when I go to a meeting in Leesbury with VDOT to discuss it. And I would appreciate it, I would be glad to answer any questions, it's a short presentation, but I would love your support at this time. Are there any questions that I can answer this time?
No questions, no sir, we don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. Kaze, do we have anyone else? All right, thank you. Moving on to item ten, public hearings. Each person addressing the board under public hearing shall step up, give his or her name, district, and his or her place of residence for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit its, his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group should be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at the time unless the consent of the board is affirmative given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak whom has not signed up. Ms. Vanderhyde, you already here?
Yes, the first public hearing that we have tonight is on the FY twenty-four school budget, and we had that advertised in the Star Tribune on May the third, and so it has met the, the requirement of public hearing to have that advertised at least seven days before this public hearing. And per law, you all will hear citizen input on this budget, but you will be unable to vote on this budget until seven days have passed. So we do have a called special meeting of this board next Tuesday, May twenty-third, at four P.M. to adopt the school budget. And just to give a few highlights, this, this year's school budget totals a hundred and twenty-seven million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars, and it does include a contribution from the locality, from you all, of twenty-two million, oh ninety-six, three fifty-six, which is an additional amount from last year of a million dollars. And so tonight, you all would hear any kind of citizen input on this said budget.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. I opened the public hearing at seven thirty-one P.M. Anyone signed up, Ms. Kaze? All right. I now close the public hearing at seven thirty-one P.M. Ms. Vanderhyde, it's you again.
The second public hearing we're, we're holding tonight is for the FY twenty-four county budget. This county budget does not include a tax increase, and it does encompass the school budget of a hundred and twenty-seven million. We have also advertised this budget on May the third in the Star Tribune. It has met the seven-day requirement for that advertisement, and so after tonight's public hearing, the same thing applies. We will have a special call meeting on May the twenty-third. We have to wait that mandatory seven days based on state code, and so we are doing that tonight. So just a few highlights from the county budget. This budget totals two hundred and thirty-two million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, and does include the school budget of a hundred and twenty-seven million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And so with that, we will have our public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. I now open the public hearing at seven thirty-two P.M. Ms. Kaze, nobody? All right. I now close the public hearing at seven thirty-two P.M. All right. So do we need a motion on this, Fatin? Okay, that'll be Tuesday, I'm sorry.
No, that's Tuesday night.
That's right, Tuesday night. All right, moving on to item eleven, unfinished business?
We have none.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item twelve, new business? There's item, do you have item, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fitzgerald has...
Mr. Chairman, I think this is the Cheshire resignation issue, and then you'll be after this, okay? I don't want to mess the votes up in our system. Okay, so I'll be talking about item twelve A.
Oh, item A, okay.
Twelve A, okay. Mr. Chairman, attached for the board's consideration tonight is resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash oh five dash oh three, and what this asks the board to do, if you adopt this resolution, it authorizes me as county attorney to petition the county circuit court to issue a writ of special election for a special election to be held on November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, to fill the remaining two years of Mr. Cheshire's Dan River Electoral District vacancy due to his resignation that's effective on June first. Since his resignation occurred outside of ninety days before the next general election, per Virginia Code Section twenty-four point two dash two two six, it allows us to petition the circuit court judge to set a special election at this November's general election. So I'm here to answer any questions. I ask the board to consider adopting the resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash oh five dash oh three that's attached in the board's packet, and then if it's passed, I will submit the paperwork at the appropriate time to the judge.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Can I get a motion to approve this?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making, I, I make a motion that we authorize our county attorney to make the necessary resolutions and rec, and recommend that the writ of special election petition order be filed.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. It is second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. I don't have it, Ms. Kaze, ones.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
You got your one. Good. Motion passed.
She got me.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move back to you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
As discussed earlier, Mr. Fitzgerald is going to be, going to a VDOT meeting on tomorrow, which I plan to be at that meeting as well, and he has asked for some type of directive from the board to suggest that we support repairing the bridge or replacing the bridge. And let me just say, I've been working on this project with our elected officials, namely Danny Ruff, Danny Marshall, and Senator Frank Ruff. Also, what I want to do is make sure that the people that are affected by that bridge, as I understand from the traffic study, there's approximately nineteen-hundred vehicles that travel across that bridge on a daily basis. Now, I know it's going to affect schools, public safety, and also I have some entrepreneurs down in that locality, namely the Gregory Brothers that have Gregory Logon, and also the trucking company down there, that they are rerouting their trucks, and it's costing them somewhere in the neighborhood of between eighteen-hundred, two-thousand dollars additional per week. So I, I think what we want to do is maybe draft a letter for Mr. Fitzgerald, but at the same time, that bridge, based on my research, can cost as much as thirty million dollars. Now, I'm being told that, you know, from VDOT's position, that they do not have the funding for that bridge because other bridges are going to take priority. I'm being told from the legislative side of this thing that, you know, obviously, they want to help, but VDOT is its own sovereign boss, if you will. The legislators can't really push VDOT around, so I, I want to kind of tamp down everyone's expectations, that sort of thing. If we should get the win, if we should get a new bridge, then that will be time to celebrate. But, but I don't want us to go off half-cocked thinking that VDOT is going to fund thirty million dollars in terms of replacing the bridge. Now, what I have done is I've asked for a new traffic study, and I've asked them to also give us a new inspection on that bridge. My particular goal in this whole thing is to get the bridge to fail inspection, because they've reduced it down to one lane with the traffic lights. If we can get it to fail inspection in terms of that one lane, its structural soundness, then we have a case to make to replace the bridge. So that's kind of where we are, and we're going to meet with VDOT tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I jump in here real quick?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that County Administrator Terrell and Supervisor Tucker are going to go to this VDOT meeting tomorrow. It's not feasible for us to put together a formal resolution tonight, but I do believe that we can put together a letter that one of them can carry up to the meeting tomorrow that just generally outlines our support for this project. I know the devil's in the details, and we don't know all the details right now, but I think we owe it to our sinistry to at least do a general letter of support. So our commitment to you is that we will have, whether tomorrow morning or tonight, we draft a, a general letter that one of you can carry up there and present tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt, and also with the board's consent, we would like that letter. And I want the citizenry to know that this was kind of like last minute, that's why it's not really on the agenda, and there was not a request to do the resolution.
And Mr. Tucker, just to make this formal, it would be appropriate to just do a, a motion?
Yep.
A second, any discussion, just so we formalize this, please.
That sounds good.
I'll offer a motion that we draft a letter. I, I second.
Second, all right, motion by Mr. Tucker, second by Mr. Warren. Any discussion on the motion? Got a comment, Mr.?
I, I just want to have one bit. It is impressive, Mr. Tucker, I didn't realize that you had been working on this issue in advance. Appreciate that very much, that you got the foresight to get on that, because I know that has been an issue for the citizens down there, and I do really like the idea of the letter coming from the board, if, if the board so desires, and hand-delivered by a supervisor, really makes a strong statement, too. Appreciate your willingness to do that, Mr. Tucker.
Also, thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Any more discussion? All right, now, gentlemen, we're ready to vote.
All right.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
All right.
Take a picture, seven oh.
Moving on to item thirteen, matters from the work session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion directing county staff to send a letter to VDOT respectfully asking it to abandon the potential U.S. twenty-nine tight squeeze improvements due to citizen complaints regarding safety and convenient issues, and repurpose the related funding for other more impactful road improvements in the county, such as the widening of Dry Fork Road.
Second.
Got a second? Think, any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say, I, I thank Mr. Vanderhyde for coming and expressing your opinion, appreciate that, everybody's opinion is okay, so, thank you, Ms. Dalton.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Dudley. Some more comments? We read your vote, gentlemen.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item fourteen, our board member reports. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I'd like to again reiterate, it's been my honor and great pleasure to serve with Supervisor Cheshire, and we're going to miss him, and we're going to continue to pray for him and his family. Again, let me thank Ms. Kaze for stepping in and stepping up to help us out in the absence of the other young lady, and also want to express my appreciation for Ms. Vanderhyde and also all of the executive team, and Mr. Warren, and those that worked on the actual budget to make sure that we come up with a balanced budget, and you all are superstars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just, I again want to say, Tim, thank you for your service. I really, really appreciate you. We're praying for you, my friend. You may have a hard road to hoe, but I don't mind hoeing it with you. I'll be, I'll, I'll pray for you, do anything I can, so, sounds odd, but we love you, brother, and we appreciate everything that you've done for this board. Also, we was discussing the budget a little bit ago. I am on the finance committee, and this was about as tough a budget as we've seen in some time. And I really, truly want to thank Mr. Tucker and Bob Warren for taking the lead and diving deep, and Kim Vanderhyde for all of her input and help in that to find the money so that we did not have to raise taxes. And these folks met, and it's, it, they kept us abreast on the finance committee of, of what they were doing, and I just, I cannot say enough for Mr. Tucker and Bob Warren and, and Kim for just handling it where most people shy away from it. You guys dove in, and, and I'm, I'm very, very proud, because the, if we had to raise taxes and you talked about the budget tonight, you'd have to put out chairs after you fill these seats, and, and so I just want to thank you all. Mr. Dalton, thank you for handling, handling the meeting the way you have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warren, any comment?
I'd echo the same sentiments and relationship to Mr. Cheshire. Tim, it's been a real privilege to get you to know, to know you and to share some stories about Walter, your dad, with you, and, and from that aspect and all, and it was wonderful to meet your family tonight, your children. It's, uh, easy... It's easy to see why you've been able to endure what you have the last 18 months. It's hard to beat that strong support system with folks that love you. And, you know, I think to the man, I can say that in the event there's anything we can do to assist you as you go through the next several months, please let us know. We're here and we certainly will have you in our thoughts and prayers. And appreciate the kind words from my colleagues about the budget. But rest assured that the message was delivered by the entire board that during the economic times that we're in now with rising inflation, we could not stand a tax increase. And I have stated before that Ms. Vanderheide nearly walks on water when it comes to the budget and finance and, you know, she likes to best walk on the water without a sweater, though. And a little inside humor there. And Mr. Hunt, standing in as acting county administrator, did a tremendous job in facilitating all of that and the oversight. I actually think he would admit that he enjoyed it and even gained some additional county knowledge from having to be in the weeds on the budget. So, but I would be making a huge mistake if I didn't point out that Sheriff Taylor, who you all have listened to us for many years, talk about he always comes and he usually brings us all a notebook about this level to tell us how and why he needs millions of dollars. He don't ask for just a few. And he was so gracious this year and so willing to work with the finance committee and the board in his request and his needs that I think we only owe it to him for respect for him and for our community to realize what a great sheriff we have in Mike Taylor. And the fact that, you know, not only does he do a wonderful job in running that department and policing the county, but he has the citizenry truly at heart. And he knew this was a tough budget and he knew we couldn't stand to be going asking people for a tax increase right now. So I want to say kudos to him. And yes, Mr. Tucker was very instrumental in working on that budget. And I was able to learn, you know, that he has a lot of expertise when it comes to financial matters and budget. And he was a very valuable asset and I appreciate that. But remember that this entire board gave the finance committee the mission to go and do this work and not come back asking for a tax increase. So the entire board was trying to work for the citizens, not to put any more undue burden on the citizens from a tax standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Scars?
This is going to sound like a broken record, but again, Tim, thank you for your service to the county. I think you proved over and over again that your focus has always been on doing the right thing for the county and I appreciate that. And again, I will hate seeing you leave, but again, I understand fully what you're going through. And again, we'll be praying for you and hope everything works out for you. And the other topic again was the finance committee and the staff, how we got through this budget process this year. This is pretty much the sixth year that we didn't have to raise property tax rate to get a balanced budget. And I don't know if you guys realize how difficult that is, but it was a pretty big deal for us to get through this year after some things that happened last year. So I appreciate all the hard work from staff and from the finance committee. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Scars. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every May, we have what's called National Police Week, which started Sunday. And yesterday was National Police Officers Memorial Day in a time by which not only do we honor the officers that are serving, but remember those that made that ultimate sacrifice. And here in Pennsylvania County, we honor eight deputies or constables as well as two troopers. And I always encourage citizens, if you've never looked at our police memorial in the Courthouse Square, please go by and do so. And in the city of Danville, they have lost six, two of which were Pennsylvania County natives. The last two, Officer Courtney Dickerson and Officer Bonnie Jones. So do remember their sacrifice and also remember their families. Dr. Jessica Jones teaches at Tunstall High School. She just won a national award for teaching excellence, which is something that we're really proud of and it's very hard to obtain. Also, Raymond Ladd, who is a Tunstall High School pitcher, has signed with the Danville Auto Box to play ball this summer. And I do ask you, remember Donald Ricketts, who is also a county native that is battling a pretty tough bout with cancer. And there's a fundraiser this Saturday at Jeffrey Scarce's Farm for him to help out on medical costs. And some of you might remember Donald, he was a crew chief with Barry Nelson Racing as well as Steve Stallings. And finally, my friend, Tim Cheshire. We're truly going to hate to see you go, but, you know, we'll be praying for you. If there's anything we do, you let us know, okay? You take care of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Cheshire, we're going to do a little different tonight. I'm going to speak and let you make the last comments. Thank you. I'd like to thank all the staff, all the citizens coming out, the ones that spoke tonight. Thank the board, we've been here since before 3 o'clock, it's been a long evening. Want to thank them. And again, I'm echoing the same thing to Mr. Cheshire. Thank you and I've enjoyed working with you and being a great guy to work with. Had a lot of good ideas and you made a difference, a positive difference. And I appreciate that. And we're going to keep you in our thoughts and prayers and anything that we can do, I can do, please let me know. Thank you for everything. Last thing I'd like to speak on is April 28th and 29th, I had the privilege to attend the Pennsylvania County Caswell Livestock Association Show at the ODAC. And I encourage anyone that's never been out there to take the time and go out there and watch these kids, show these animals and see how much time they put into doing this and how appreciative they are. I had the opportunity to hand out some ribbons to two different classes and it didn't make no difference, you give me blue ribbon or you give me pink ribbon. They all said, "Thank you." I mean, you can tell they're very respectful young kids. I mean, heck, they might be sent up there where I'm at one day, they are future. So, I mean, it's a great program.
That's right.
If you ever had the opportunity, I encourage you to go out and support that. I mean, it was like 70, 70-some kids that participated. The parents, you got to give them hands up, too. I mean, they spent a lot of time working with their children. But again, it's just a great program and I wanted to recognize them tonight. And again, if you have the chance, please attend and support them young people. And with that, again, thank everyone. Mr. Cheshire, this is your time, my friend. We're going to go now.
All right. Make it short. You could.
No, I'm just kidding.
Take your time.
Take your time.
I want to thank everyone on the board. I've learned a lot of lessons, some good, some bad, as far as opening my eyes. I was a citizen, I sat on the other side and long as the politics didn't bother me, I was fine. But now I got on this side of it, this whole new can of worms. I've learned a whole lot that functions. When we first had one of our first budget meetings, every night, every trip up here, my wife had to remind me to be quiet and listen. And, which was good advice, I was a newbie. And I was far from, far from even deserving to be. And then Mr. Warren would say, well, the ABC and RDK and OB, I'm like, do what? And I felt so lost. Kim Vanderheide would do the same thing, all these acronyms, ABBA, Sticks, whoever, whatever other band it was. And it was overwhelming. And I would go home and tell my wife, I said, "I have messed up. I do not have a clue what's going on." I really did. I had a friend of mine run for another county seat and we won the same night. And the funny thing was, he had a big barbecue place run it out and he says, "Well, you won, what are you doing?" I said, "I'm on the way to bed, what are you doing?" So the Lord has a purpose for everything, there was a reason I was here, the reason I won. The least deserving I am. I had to learn a lot. I'm just a, I'm a worker, that's all I, I mean, most times when y'all saw me come in here, it was not in a suit and tie. Most times I had just come off work, I had a bald cap, I had the head of the hat hair. And, well, at one time I didn't have hardly any hair, so when I decided, when I was able to start growing my hair back, I decided to grow it long just to aggravate cancer. I know that sounds stupid, but I grew my beard. When I was in the hospital, I had gotten so weak I couldn't shake. So when I was able to, and I was pulling my hair out like shedding. So when all the chemo and everything was done and I started growing it back, I was like, I've never had a beard in my life, so that's the reason I have a beard. And then to hear the news, you know, we got to go through this again, but it's not the same. Yeah, hopefully, Lord willing, it's going to be a little bit easier. But to step down from the board was probably one of the hardest decisions I've made because I'm not, I'm not a quitter. I hate quitters. Then somebody made a very wise statement today. Do you call somebody that quit drinking, an alcoholic, and they quit, are they, are they bad? I'm like, no. There are some things you need to quit. Last year was hard on us. I would come in here, and I've not said anything, but last year, I would come home from chemo and then it wouldn't be a couple of days and I'd have to be in the board meeting. It was hard. And there was the, some of the medications put the filter off your mouth and you may say something that you normally wouldn't say. So I pray that if I did say anything, y'all please forgive me. But Pennsylvania County citizens have been off the chart. When I gave my notice that I was going to resign, my wife said, "Are you going to..." She says, "I don't think you ought to do it right now because you're going to regret it." I said, "I haven't done anything." I told my wife what I'm going to do and I did regret it, so it's not nothing new. But I have met some of the most awesome people, some of the most wise people in their fields. Ms. Vanderheide, I've had the interactions with her, not like the rest, but she's taught me a lot. I'm still down with the acronyms, but one day maybe I'll get the list. Mr. Hunt, I've gotten to know him, Mr. Terrell. Sheriff Taylor. One, Mr. Arnold. Him and I have gotten to know each other a little bit better and I've gotten a deep appreciation from the people that are behind, see, citizens of Virginia, Pennsylvania County don't know half of what these people do.
Yeah.
They're some very wise people, very good people. They put up with knuckleheads like me. I'll ask questions and, like I said, for the longest time, you can ask just about anybody on the board, I stayed quiet because I had to learn. And now, you know, I kind of felt like I was getting my groove and now I felt like I didn't want to ride that ride again and have the stress. Doctor had told us, you know, the less stress you have, the better off you're going to be, you're going to heal up quicker. And so if I'm not here, I can't take care of my wife and I can't take care of my kids, even though they're grown. They still think they're grown, but they're still my babies. But there's not enough thank yous, there's not enough how grateful I am, how kind y'all have been to me. Every one of you. And somebody mentioned that, "Oh, maybe a couple of years you want to do this." I'm just going to take it straight up and it's not happening, okay? I'm done. I'm not, I'm not that politician, but I'll fight for this county teeth and nail. This is an awesome place to live. We're blessed, we've got some of the most beautiful scenery this side of heaven. I've got some of the most awesome people in the county and I don't see anything but us going up. I think what I pray is that the gentleman or lady that takes my seat realizes there's a lot coming down the pipe and we need the right people, the godly people, ones that's going to stand up for the county, ones that's going to stand up for our Dan River District. So, like I said, there's not enough thank yous under heaven for everything all the kindness y'all showed me. And I appreciate it.
I said we could go. Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Mr. Terrell?
Please welcome Diana McFarlane as the new public relations manager.
Stand up. There she goes.
She brings a wealth of local government media experience and will contribute significantly to our efforts to connect with citizens about our many accomplishments. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, Mr. Hunt, you have anything, sir?
I'll be very brief. Tim, I'm going to miss you.
No, you're not.
The highest compliment I can give a person is, Tim is full of common sense and he's a gentleman.
Yes.
I learned so much from him, I saw so much growth in him in these last two years and he will be missed and don't be a stranger.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Very good.